All right, well, let's get started. Welcome, everyone, to the City of Everett Planning Commission Meeting for Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Labra.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
All right, so has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from last meeting? Does anybody want to make any changes? Anyone want to move to adopt?
I moved to adopt the minutes.
I'll second. Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Mr. Lark?
Yes.
Mr. Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Upstain.
Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Chair Beck?
Yes. Okay. So, does anybody have any reports to make? Commissioner Finch?
None.
Commissioner Lark?
Nothing to report.
No report?
None.
I actually do have a report, and I'm going to read it. So, last week, I attended the Port Gardner Neighborhood Meeting where the Norton Avenue Playfield Project was discussed. As the Commission might be aware, the Everett School District has signed a lease with Housing Hope in order to build supportive housing for some of the district's homeless students. In response to the neighborhood's legitimate concerns over the lack of public involvement in the proposal, City Council has initiated a moratorium to delay further consideration for the immediate future. The current policy allows supportive housing in single-unit residential districts through a conditional use permit. I think this is a very smart move on Council's part. I also want to express appreciation to Councilwoman Stonecypher for being responsive to the neighborhood concerns. In my opinion, any land use application that proposes significant changes in an established neighborhood should always be subject to public review in order to address the reasonable concerns related to the proposal's impacts. Without these measures, public trust in our community institutions is deeply eroded. It is my understanding a rezone application on this property is possibly headed to the Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation in the near future. I'm sure Alan is prepared to provide us with more details on the proposal's current status. That said, the student homeless crisis is all too real and all too urgent in this city. This is not the school district's or Housing Hope's responsibility to solve alone. Our students represent our hopes and dreams for the future. As we move forward with this proposal, it is important to remember at the core of these discussions are the interests of the city's most promising and vulnerable population. It is my sincere hope we will meet this challenge with the kindness, consideration, and dignity our students deserve. And if you'd like to...
Chair, Alan Giffen, planning director, and the, as Chair Person Beck has reported, the City Council did adopt a moratorium ordinance last week on supportive housing applications within single-family zones. Our code currently does allow for supportive housing in multifamily and commercial zones and on, and in single-family zones on land that's owned by a public agency. The moratorium has a period of six months, with possible extensions beyond six months. The City Council must hold a public hearing within 60 days of last Wednesday night in order to meet the state law requirement to hold a public hearing on the moratorium. We don't have a date certain yet. We're looking probably for July 10th if that is, meets with the council president's approval for a hearing date that night. What's likely to occur after the hearing would be for the council to send it to the Planning Commission to ask for a review of specific items in the code, or maybe not specific, just the ordinance as it was passed in 2016 for a review. I'm pretty sure that one of the items will be should supportive housing be a permitted use in single-family zones, and if so, under what circumstances. So, that's probably as much as I can tell you about it right now, but after we have the public hearing with the City Council, I should have more information and be able to report back what, how that'll affect workload this year. Have any questions for me?
Are we talking about the one in front of Sequoia, or are we talking the one on Norton at the top of the hill, the ball field?
The property that was proposed for the supportive housing was the Norton Ballfield Site.
Thank you.
And that's in a single-family zone.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so at this time, if there's anyone in the...
I do have one other item, separate matter.
Pardon guys.
And I had reported in the past that City Council has asked for the Planning Commission to prepare a climate action plan. We have issued a request for proposals from consultants. The deadline for consultants to respond is July 11th, and so probably would be sometime in the early fall before we have any item on your, one of your agendas, but that's where we are today on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd actually like to add to that. So, the Snow Homeish PUD sent a letter to me that they were looking forward to this climate action plan and partnering with us, and it was my intention to share it with the Commission. Unfortunately, my scanner has been giving me a few problems, so I don't know if Kathy, if maybe you have a copy of that. If you don't, then, okay, all right, all right, I'll figure it out, but we'll get a copy of that letter because it was a very nice letter, so. Any other?
That's it, thank you.
All right. So, at this time, if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak to Planning Commission on an item that's not on the agenda, please feel free to come forward and just state your name and your address. Do you volunteer? All right, then we'll just move along to item number one, rethink zoning, commercial and industrial zones. David, is this you?
Something wrong with the microphones here.
We don't have any mic, so, the Wizard of Oz will...
There we go. All right, thank you, Jeff. He works magic behind the screen there, so.
I was impressed with the most good test.
Yeah. David Stahlheim, Long Range Planning Manager, and David Tyler is out sick tonight, so Alan and I are going to kind of walk through this slowly so that we can learn it as you learn it a little bit along with, but as you know, at the last meeting, we talked about some of the residential zone consolidation concepts, and tonight, we're talking about the commercial and industrial zones, or business. And so, the first focus is to look at the business and commercial zones. So, currently, we have 10 zones of existing business and commercial. In the neighborhood in downtown, we have three different zones, the B1, B2B, and the urban mix. Urban mix was the new zone that we did for Metro Everett. And then, we have six zones in the arterial corridors, or as I affectionately call them, the strip corridors. They are along strips, and that includes the B2, the Broadway Mixed Use, C1, C1R, E1, and the E1 Mixed Use Overlay. And then, lastly, we have the waterfront commercial zone, and I think Dave set this up. If I click on that, we can look at the map of these different zones. See, zoom in a little bit in here. So, as you go from north to south, we have the Broadway Mixed Use Zone out of the waterfront. We have the waterfront commercial. We have a couple of different nodes, and these are B1 zones out in these areas. We have a C1.
Some C1.
C1 Zone out on the other side of I-5, going towards the river. We have the urban mixed zone here, which is Metro Everett. And then, we have Evergreen Way, which was all kind of rezoned in 2008, I believe.
2012.
2012, I'm getting my, that was another rezone, so 2012. And then, we have the Mixed Use Overlay, which happens to be close to where all the BRT stops are, so those were special standards in there. You can see some commercial zoning, the B2 Community Business Zone in different areas. Again, some mixed bag of C1 zoning throughout the area, and then, we have some more commercial zoning, business zoning, neighborhood business type of zones down in the Silver Lake area as well. Then, this is all of Everett Mall in here. So, a little bit of everything scattered around the area currently. Dave's fancy with these, these zones, or these clicks, so. So, as we're walking through this, and I think we have previously briefed you on some initial ideas, but if not, I think that some of this, we actually took to the City Council. So, what we're looking at is a concept of maybe three, three groups of things. So, when we look at the existing commercial and business zones, we see some patterns of the B1 and the B2B, at least a portion of it, being neighborhood business oriented. And then, we have a big group of the more general commercial or business zones, the B2, and again, a part of B2B, C1, C1R, E1, as being a business group zones. And we have the areas that are kind of mixed. These are some of the new, new planning that we've done with Metro Everett, Evergreen Way, and Broadway, as we're heading north towards the College, and then also the waterfront commercial areas, and those have some characteristics of a little bit more mix of housing and commercial retail types of uses, and a little bit less kind of the highway corridor types of uses. So, kind of go into a little bit more of general concepts, the proposed zones of the neighborhood businesses. Again, these are kind of small nodes. These are community oriented. They are mixed use themselves, but they're really the smaller notions. Idea is neighborhood intersections. They'd be adjacent to residential. It's possible that with time, there may be other nodes that we don't currently have zoned for this, and so, we've heard a lot of conversation from people as we've done different neighborhood outreach about the walkability of neighborhoods and trying to have something within a walkable distance for residential neighborhoods. So, it's possible that there's some areas that aren't currently zoned for some neighborhood business that might meet this criteria in the future, or not necessarily looking for rezones at this point in time, but we're developing some of the criteria that would open that as a potential down the road. And then, the uses, kind of again, a mixed use of retail, restaurant, office, services, and residential. Development standards, this is kind of low, low-scale development, again, neighborhood commercial areas, so these are lower building heights, trying to fit in with the neighborhood, smaller building sizes, blending in, and compatible architectural style. So, this is not a zone where you expect big box retail, for example, car dealerships, things like that, but more of your neighborhood business activities. So, as David started looking at the permitted uses, similar to what we did with the residential, we started to see quite a bit of overlap between what's currently allowed in the zones, and so, the B1, B2B, and so, the intersection right here, these are all the uses that are allowed in both of these zones currently. And so, you start seeing a few things that are allowed in one side or the other, for example, government office, business park, printing, Beck Clinic in the B2B, and then over in the B1. Probably the only thing that's really largely different is probably shopping center, which is potentially a little bit bigger of a development than a neighborhood business in some cases, but then, some of the differences could be applied by development standards, so as we look at consolidating these things, again, some of those, like limits on in B2B about retail, could be really about the size of the building and how much gross floor area is devoted to retail type of uses in the neighborhood. And then, the next is the business zone. So, the concept again is general business here, equivalent zones. We got one, two, three, four, five different zones. Again, this is more of our commercial arterials, Everett Mall, Evergreen, part of it, at least not in the areas that are not where the BRT stops are, 19th Avenue Southeast around Silver Lake, 132nd. This would be your, kind of your full range of commercial activities. In all of our commercial zones, we were actually calling them commercial mixed zones because we would allow multifamily residential within those areas as well, and auto sales in a zone like this would be anticipated to be allowed in something like that. Development standards in here, looking at building and site design, streetscape, some transit friendly and buffer from residential. There are quite a few areas where we actually don't have some development standards, so we have development standards along Evergreen Way, Broadway, for example, but there's quite a few areas where we don't have development standards, and so, this is a little bit, would be new to kind of actually start looking a little bit more at some building and site standards. We do have sign standards, we do have landscaping standards, but some things with some building design and orientation and things like that, some things that we'd probably be looking at for some additions here. So, similarly, in the business zone, there's a large intersection of these four different zones of the uses that are allowed, and there's very little in the periphery that kind of gets, that's not in that, that area. Things like bed and breakfasts, you know, again, auto sales, nurseries, which is tree plant nurseries, things like that, and again, those are things that, starting looking at those uses and whether they could fit a consolidated zone and what some of those standards might The third category looking at is the, is the urban mixed zone. So, what we did for Metro Everett, equivalent would be, again, the urban mix in Metro Everett, the Mixed Use Overlay along Evergreen Way by the BRT stops, Broadway Mixed Use and waterfront commercial, or explain where the locations are, the uses. These are full range of commercial, multifamily, mixed use, public uses, but the development standards are going to be a little bit more pedestrian focused and transit friendly. So, the development standards are kind of at another, another level versus kind of the business of the arterial corridors is a little bit more focused on building design and pedestrian transit friendly building uses in these areas. Again, when you look at the intersection of a lot of these uses, a lot of similarities, again, and very little on the, that are kind of left off to the side in one zone or the other, and so, looking at consolidation of those uses, and so, it doesn't seem to be a real heavy lift to try to move these uses into this category either. But, of course, with any of this, some of it, some of the challenges that we have is development standards vary considerably by zone, and so, as we start moving those together, we have to deal with that. One of the things that we're also looking at is that the city has had a history of allowing a lot of rezones since the 1980s by contract, and so, we have a lot of site-specific contract rezones where those contracts either limit the uses or some development standards, so there are site-specific agreements for those properties, and so, we, over the last couple years, we've started to catalog those and map those out and identify them, and now, we're going kind of to the next step to kind of identify what those uses are and what the current zoning, because in some cases, the zoning's actually has changed since those contracts were written even, so. And so, some of those, we're reviewing for applicability. Some of them have the ability for us to void the contracts and to say the current zoning or the proposed zoning would overrule, and in most cases, the proposed zoning would be more permissive than, than what it is, but again, we're trying to get a good sense of that and going through and doing inventory of all those contract rezones and what we can and can't do. Another challenge that we have is that, and I'm not sure, Alan, when the clinic and office overlays, was that the 1980s or?
Yeah, maybe I'll talk a little bit, I'll go back to number two, the contract rezones, and maybe talk about numbers two, three, and four on this list. Most of the contract rezones that we have were initiated at the time that we had a code that was about this thick. You know, we're talking about streamlining today, but not quite to that degree, and most of the zones that we had at that time, and the standards that we had, were totally lacking. We had very little in the way of landscaping regulations or sign standards, and so, every time we had a rezone that was probably, in most cases, in a kind of a visually prominent area of the community, the staff at that time tried to create a kind of a new set of standards or a better set of standards for each of these rezone areas, and so, we did that, I say we, this is, you know, going back over 30 years ago, and there were a number of properties that the main purpose of the contract reason was just to apply better development standards than the code had at that time, which was one of the reasons that we ended up rewriting the code in the late 1980s, so that we could, you know, just have standards that applied no matter what the zone was, or to create better standards. And also, in the late 80s, in the, for clinic and office overlay zones, we had a code that in the multifamily zones, so R3, R4, and R5, which were kind of on both sides of downtown, allowed clinics and offices in residential zones, and what we found, and you can see this pattern today, is a couple of things. One, we had a lot of clinics that were established rather than in downtown or commercial areas. They moved where they could find more cheap, cheaply available and developable residential lands, so where the Everett Clinic is, for example, is in a residential zone with, and it was at least until we established these clinic overlay zones. We also have, south of the courthouse, a lot of attorney's offices that were established in homes or, in some cases, new buildings built because the code at that time allowed it in the late 80s, or with the 18, or 1989, 1989 code. We changed the permitted uses in those zones so that we didn't, well, it had two effects, effects primarily. It allowed for kind of a dispersal of businesses out of the downtown core, but it also allowed for a lot of non-residential uses in residential zones that was reducing our capacity for housing, because these multifamily zoned areas did have a lot of capacity for, for housing, but when they were getting developed with clinics or offices, office uses, it was eroding that capacity for housing in the community, and so, we just limited the clinics and offices to areas where they had already been established in a fairly heavy concentration, so example, around the Everett Clinic or around Providence Hospital, Pacific Campus, or just south of the courthouse, and then, all the other R3, R4, R5 zone areas in the city could not have clinics and offices any longer. And so, that's something that's, we're going to take another look at here as to what those areas should be. Should they remain residential with an overlay, or should we get rid of the overlay and perhaps zone them commercial, because some of them are really, like, for example, the Everett Clinic, definitely a commercial feel more than a residential area in that neighborhood. And the fourth item there, the third item that I'm going to talk about, and item number four, car dealerships. There was also, in the 1989 code, geographic limits on where auto dealerships could go. We had most of the car lots, car dealers, used car, either new or used cars, were located either on Evergreen Way or on, on Broadway, and at that time, the city decided to not allow for more car dealerships, for example, on Everett Mallway or in the downtown area, and then, the idea was to kind of restrict them to, to basically strip commercial corridors that were very well-established with automobile dealerships. And so, we have, in what were C1 zones or B2 zones, we allowed automobile sales, but only on Evergreen or on Rucker, and so, it's not Rucker, I'm sorry, Broadway. And so, the, while, while the zone is much broader than those two corridors, the thought was to put some geographic restrictions within the zones, and so, those things are still in the code today, and we'll take another look at all of those. And as we get into consolidating zones, if we created, you know, one zone to replace five that allow automobile sales, then are we going to maintain those geographic restrictions if we have just this one zone that covers such a much larger swath of our commercial real estate? So, sorry for the long-winded explanation there, but the kind of a legacy of past codes.
So, some of the solutions that we're looking at, and Alan's touched on some of them, is using different tools that we have, and so, when we did Metro Everett, we used kind of a street typology or street designations to differentiate standards, and so, again, designating what streets would either prohibit certain uses or allow them. Standardized development regulations for similar properties, so trying to, there's not much difference between the Evergreen Way and Broadway Mixed Use Standards, for example, so trying to consolidate those, and so, looking at those solutions. Looking at a building height map, so similar to what we did for Metro Everett is doing that, and then, looking at what we can do with the contract rezones and whether we can repeal those as part of the solutions. So, the next section is covering industrial zones, and so, there's six industrial zones currently. There's four light industrial, C2, M1, MM, and then, the urban light industrial, which is what we had within the Metro Everett. Then, we have two heavy industrial zones, the MS and the M2, and zoom in on this, and so, in here, the colored areas are the different industrial zones, so you see the areas along the water. We have some of the marine services. Within here, we have heavy manufacturing in quite, quite a few different areas. Business Park is going to be down, down around Boeing in this area, so most of our industrial land base clearly is in South Everett, but we also have some that's down along the riverfront area here as well. So, for a city our size, we have a large industrial land base, and then, we have, this area is the urban light industrial that we established as part of the Metro Everett Plan. So, the consolidation concept here is, again, looking at two designations. Again, the characteristics that we're seeing is basically broken into light industrial and heavy industrial, and so, looking at those zones, and the light industrial is really kind of heavy commercial in some respects, and light industrial and office park. Locations would be the periphery of our central business district, Southwest Everett, Seaway Center, and some places around Airport Road. Uses being the full range of light industrial and limited commercial. Development standards being basic, a lot of the design associated with standards that we had in the metro and the Southwest Everett be there, and there are some master plans that have been done that are adopted by the city, and so, they provide kind of the campus development in some of the areas, and so, retain some of those master plan developments. Heavy industry is locations on the waterfront, Smith Island, Boeing, Hardison Road. Again, heavy manufacturing aircraft from marine-related building and site design. You know, a big issues are separation from residential, and there's some things with development standards of public access to shorelines when, when possible as part of that. So, looking at the consolidation there, permitted uses, again, a lot of the things are, are similar, the wide variety of light industrial uses. The Metro Everett and the Southwest Everett may have slightly different uses to match, and so, we have to look at working through some of those issues. And then, the heavy industry is just basically the heavy manufacturing aircraft and marine-related commerce as part of that. commerce as part of that. So some of the challenges that we see here are the development standards vary by zone. We also have the Southwest Everett Subarea Plan and Plan to Action. Residential use integration in Metro Everett. So in Metro Everett, we do allow residential use within the industrial zones. So looking at different solutions for this, looking at, again, some streets or shoreline designations to differentiate standards. For example, the areas along the port are within the shoreline areas as well. And so that helps define some characteristics and uses as part of that. Looking at retaining master plans and development agreements. We have a long history of master plans and agreements with Boeing and Seaway Center and Fluke. And then also looking at those things that are no longer current, to repeal those. And then also looking at what we can do in Metro Everett only, because those are kind of unique standards that perhaps with particularly residential as part of that. So with that, that's kind of the overview of where we're going. Again, like last time, this is kind of some concepts, things that we're seeing as part of this, and look forward to hearing your feedback and guidance on this.
Does anyone have questions? Commissioner Zosomwinski?
One question that occurred to me was that we currently have in the industrial zones, one that's dedicated to marine services. And I'm wondering if the waterfront is a significant enough resource and specialized enough to merit being limited to marine-oriented businesses. If it's, if it's within a consolidation package, it might open it up to non-marine businesses and perhaps it's worthy of dedicating waterfront property to specifically marine. You guys probably have some idea of demand-supply issues in that regard, and it was just a question that occurred to me as I was reading the concept here.
That's a good question. And in the case of the maritime services zoning, MS, that was on the map, and you'll notice that it does not apply like in where the port of Everett or the naval station is. That's a heavy manufacturing zone. But in the, in the areas where it has been established, one of the challenges is there's very little navigable water that you can actually do waterborne marine commerce, with the exception of the very tip of the Gildwyn property where there's an asphalt batch plant today because of the water depth being too shallow and the environmental conditions in the mud flats such that you wouldn't be able to, you'd never get a permit to dredge those if you wanted to for environmental reasons. And that's the only way that you could make them really kind of water-dependent. There are a lot of, in those areas, boat service type businesses that are located away from the shoreline edge, some small industrial buildings kind of north of the ports, mixed use development waterfront place. There are a number of businesses there. Some of those are marine-oriented and some of them are not. But at least along the shoreline edge, that's one of the unfortunate things that we have going for us is that although it's close to the water, you can't really get to it from the water with a boat.
Okay. So those, many of those uses could technically be located off the waterfront and still function fine.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
And one of the things that we had there too is that, remember, I shouldn't say remember because not everyone knows this, Michael knows this, so. But part of the regulation package is that we have shoreline management regulations as well as zoning regulations. And so in some areas for shoreline management, we may require actually water-dependent uses to be located along the shoreline. And so, so in some respects, the shoreline regulations will dictate that you have to have a water-dependent use within that 200 feet of the shoreline to make sure that we reserve that land for water-dependent activity. So those are some of the answers to not getting too worried about having a little bit more uses along the waterfront because we have another package of regulations that will address that.
I don't know how to really phrase this, but how, because there's so much unknown moving forward. It's just like 10 years ago, everybody was building box stores and all the zoning, and now everybody's got those box stores who would like to turn them into something else or get rid of them. Banks is an example. I know from being involved, it's, they're, they're going away. It's, they're not going to have parking lots and drive-throughs and all of those things. So what are you guys able to look at so we make sure that we're planning so that we've got a walkable neighborhood that you talk about all the time so I can leave my house or apartment, walk to the dry cleaners, walk to the bank, walk to the corner store?
Yeah, I think probably a couple of different approaches. First off, I think when we did Metro Everett, we reduced the number of uses in half, for example. And so we have a lot more flexibility within the code and we're, that's kind of the structure that we're proposing for the new code as well, the same list of uses in all these zones. And so that really helps with future conversion of buildings. And so rather than being so worried that it's a bank right now and now it's going to be an office building or a restaurant, those types of conversions are less challenging with consolidated uses as part of that.
Less challenging?
Less challenging.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely less challenging. So we did the same thing with parking, so no longer are you having all these different uses and you may be short two spaces and you just can't do that tenant improvement anymore and things. And so, so doing that should be a lot more flexible for the future as part of that. I think the second thing is, I think when we think about neighborhood businesses, again, thinking about those uses and thinking more about performance standards, about, you know, the size of the building, the gross floor area, how tall buildings are, the nuisance characteristics with noise and light and glare, things like that, rather than being so specific about the use. So, you know, things like dry cleaners and, you know, does it really need to be a use in the code for dry cleaners, for example? You know, so, and I think we took that out of the use tables in Metro Everett, I think. It's just the service business.
So changing the designation then is what you're saying, still allows them to be there?
Yeah, I think that we look at the uses in a, kind of with an open mind, but then look at the performance standards. Again, you know, what we're hearing mostly from the feedback that I've gotten and from you folks and from the public, it's really about those performance standards. How big is the building, parking, the design of it, and the nuisance characteristics in terms of, you know, is it operating all night long, for example? That's not going to fit a neighborhood characteristics. So can we write those performance standards to make sure that that's the characteristics of a neighborhood and not worry as much about being so specific about the use that's there?
So I'm in that zone and I've got a 24-hour market?
Yeah, that's a conversation that might be not necessarily a neighborhood business. That might not work. Or if it works, then those are things that maybe that's noticed to the neighbors and we have an opportunity for input as part of those conversations is how do you, how do you deal with that kind of traffic that's happening in the night, what's going on in that neighborhood that would allow that?
So there's a space for those things to happen or that conversation to happen?
Well, I think that's what we're trying to frame in these conversations is how, what do we want to get out of this and how do we do that?
Yeah, that's, that's what I see in the walkability side of it is, you know, making sure that we're looking out for those things because the bigger we get, the closer we'll get to a lot of things being open 24 hours.
Some neighborhoods that would be perfectly expected and acceptable in, for example, Metro Everett, you'd probably expect to see something that caters to greater concentration of population, whereas in some of the lower-density neighborhoods that are quieter in nature, A, they probably don't have enough market demand for somebody to stay open 24 hours, but if you did, you'd probably have some noise issues or something that would make the use incompatible with abiding residential.
Charging stations, are we looking at those?
As a classification, as a use classification.
If we go more electric, it's...
Yeah, that's, that's something for us to think about, you know, how do we regulate them in the code? We do allow them in our current code, but as a separate land use, is it a land use or is it an infrastructure item on a different land, you know, a larger land use? So, for example, in a business parking lot, would you promote those or allow those? And so, you know, those are all things we don't have answers for yet, but that's the type of thing that we need to think about.
Yeah, just, my granddaughter, I'm buying her a car, so she wants me to buy this car and it's electric and she lives in an apartment. Well, that's out, you know, but the further we get along that hole and, you know, we're thinking out in front here on this zoning, it's just something I think...
And I think that probably future, either building codes or land use codes, we will either require or provide incentives for that type of thing to encourage electric vehicles. It's certainly something that goes along with cleaner air and less carbon footprint.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have other questions? Commissioner Finch?
I think that, so I like the direction you guys are heading. I think that moving away from rigid definition of uses in favor of performance standards is a, is a great way to address especially the, the commercial zones. I'm assuming that kind of the next iteration of this would probably include some FAR guidance and some height guidance as well.
Yeah, we haven't, I don't think in our current commercial we have FAR.
We do, yeah, we do not. We, we used to in the downtown B3 zone, but we do not elsewhere within the code. I don't recall.
But that might be an approach in the neighborhood business, for example, to, for performance standards.
And I noticed in the table on page five, in the neighborhood business, under development standards concept, it said no max density, which made me think of, well, maybe that's a typo.
Oh, that was for residential.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, we usually talk, the density is referring to residential, sorry about that.
No, that's, that's fine. So when thinking about making these zones more simple and making the code easier to use, you know, FAR is somewhat of a blunt object, but it is helpful in kind of quickly understanding the development capacity of the site. And I think it's been pretty helpful in Seattle at least. So that may be one metric to consider in taking this forward. And then a height map that accompanies the commercial zoning makes a lot of sense to me as well.
Right. And that's, that's what we did with Metro, and so most of you are familiar with that approach, rather than same height standard in a single zone for all uses, probably vary by geography.
Yeah, I mean, one of the benefits to FAR maximums is one can fairly quickly value a site if other metrics are known. And so rather than going through a massing study with an architect to dial in the envelope and then understand the square footage of a building, if you've got a max FAR, you can quickly at least get to an approximate value. So from a, from a user perspective, that's somewhat helpful. Again, it's a blunt object from a design perspective, but it's helpful from a development perspective. And then one other question I had was in the urban mix zone, and I noticed in the map, and we all know this, Broadway is a part of that urban mix zone, you know, between certain streets. And I still don't consider that a pedestrian-friendly environment. And, and I'm seeing users in the urban mix zone, I think in urban mix zone, renovate their buildings, leaving one wall standing. And so it kind of perpetuates a non-pedestrian-friendly feel. And I'm not sure what we as a planning commission can do about that kind of a thing, but I think it's something to be aware of as we move forward is that how clever people will find a way to continue a use that isn't compatible with where we want to go in the future.
I think I know which one you're talking about.
I think I walk by it every morning.
But it's, well, at least you're walking. But it's, but it's not just one. I mean, if you think about from, you know, from the north side of Everett Avenue to, you know, to Hewitt or to, I guess, to Wall Street, despite the fact that that isn't, you know, Metro Everett, that's not a pedestrian-friendly area. You know, it's a, it's a difficult intersection in Everett Avenue and Broadway. And so when I think about the application of building design standards, you look at, I think it's, there's a sandwich shop that was a relatively recent addition, which is sited close to the street and a pedestrian-friendly manner, but it's almost like that was lost because everything around it is so auto-oriented.
It takes time.
Yes.
If you look, look at Seattle where all the buildings are, that's where all the parking lots were 20 years ago.
Right.
All the new buildings and, or one-story buildings are now 10-story buildings. And we're not going to probably have it happen ever quite as quickly, obviously, but, you know, those are actually kind of land banking for the future, those parking lots and strip commercial type uses. Fast food restaurants will be, you know, three, four, or five-story buildings in the future.
I hope so.
That's, that's the purpose of the standards anyways, trying to encourage that.
Couple of things down the road for Broadway too, just to remember that light rail coming in will, some of those areas with the one-wall standing will be within a quarter mile of light rail stations likely. And so in 20 years, that, that may change the characteristics of that area. And then also community transit starting to plan for another swift route going up potentially Broadway to serve Arlington. And so, so it'll be starting the planning process, I think, in another five years or something like that, or maybe even shorter than that, to start looking at that, that route planning for there too. So having another BRT corridor going up there, so.
I think the, the exploration of the neighborhood business zone will dovetail nicely into what we were looking at last time relative to the multifamily standards. It had a transition between single-family and the neighborhood business.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public who might want to?
Yeah, I was gonna, does anybody want to speak on this particular agenda item? Any comments? Come on up.
Listening to some of this tonight strikes me from the past that we have discussed in city business, that we have discussed that Broadway north of 41st is generally limited to the alley for commercial development. I think, I think that there was an unwritten sentiment that was proposed at the neighborhood meeting, Port Gardner the other night, was, you know, something about preservation of our neighborhoods. If we do away with this on Broadway, then, you know, just how far do we go? How far do we go east and west? How much do we encroach in our neighborhoods? And I think that might become unacceptable. The other thing that comes to mind of concern is neighborhood businesses, and just how large are we talking about as neighborhood business? Do we, I mean, do we limit them to 500 square feet or 5,000 square feet? Again, I guess a lot of that goes back to the size and the distance from the street, if we go half lot, full lot, or to the alley. What, I guess the major last question would be what exception would supersede the code, whether it be a public, public entity or private business? Say we can do away with, with this rule and... Say, we can do away with, with this rule and, you know, consume a whole block, consume four blocks. I mean, I'll just put that out there. Somebody can say, well, I own the property, we do what we want with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I think that about does it for this meeting. Any other comments from staff or?
Yeah, so we're not going to have a meeting, the first meeting in July, so that one's, that one's off. And then, so we're going to come back, the second meeting in July, I think it's the 16th of July, and we're going to go back on residential. So we'll play a little ping pong with this conversation. And so we have taken some of that feedback from last time, and we'll come back with some, some ideas. So fleshing out a little bit more, put a little meat on the bones, and perhaps even a map to go with it, so, kind of thing. So start seeing a little bit more to this and start framing this out, and then we'll continue to do that with the commercial. And somewhere down the, not too distant future, we'll, we'll be working on the heights as well. So coming back with the heights, and in large measure, we'll be using the existing heights as the base for the conversation. So we're not going to be doing anything different, but we may be proposing some, maybe some additional heights with some public benefits associated with that type of thing, so. So stay tuned.
All right. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.